Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. John McKinnon is the pastor at First Presbyterian Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Stone Cypher if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. But would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Creator God, ruler of all nations, in the scriptures you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their service. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved Oklahoma City. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for We are nearing the first anniversary of our first MAPS 3 Wellness Center. We brought the folks from Healthy Living and Fitness. Come on up, Bill. Bring your group. And, you know, a year ago, we held a ribbon cutting. And at that time, we were optimistic about the membership we would be able to attract at our northwest location. And then these three and dozens of others went to work and started trying to figure out just how we were going to make all of this operate effectively. And the results have been just overwhelming. I mean, I think they've been overwhelmed, we've been overwhelmed, and all of it in a very good day, good way. We have a citation. I'll ask the clerk to read it, and I'll pull it out here.
Whereas in 2009, Oklahoma City residents passed the MAPS 3 initiative, which included recreational and social facilities to support and promote a healthy, active lifestyle, social interaction, and overall quality of life for Oklahoma City adults 50 years and forever. And whereas Oklahoma City's first MAPS 3 Adult Wellness Center opened March 20th, 2017, at 11501 North Rockwell Avenue. Whereas the 40,272 square foot center operated by Healthy Living and Fitness, Inc., has a heated indoor saltwater fitness pool, a full-size gymnasium, fully-equipped exercise room, and aerobics room, classroom space, a demonstration kitchen, an art studio, café, lounge, health screening room, and more. Whereas Healthy Living and Fitness's mission for the center is to provide state-of-the-art health and wellness services, empowering adults to become avid health consumers responsible for their well-being and fulfillment of their personal goals. Whereas the center has exceeded enrollment expectations and the expectations of the local community. Based on resident feedback, the center is succeeding in enhancing the quality of life and health and wellness of the residents of Oklahoma City. Now therefore Mick Cornet, Mayor of the City of Oklahoma City, does hereby commend Healthy Living and Fitness, Inc. on its partnership with the City of Oklahoma City and for its efforts to improve health and wellness outcomes in Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation to the staff at the Wellness Center on North Rockwell. And I'll hand the microphone over to Bill, who really had the vision to work with the city and make this a reality.
Mayor, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you, the City Council, all the city staff, the subcommittees, everyone who was involved in this Wellness Center. We had a vision to help people, and that's exactly what's taking place out there. Lives are being changed, people are being helped, and so I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Take our appreciation back to the staff, will you? All right, let's show our appreciation one more time. All right, we're also proud of our city staff. And we go through a training exercise called Leading for Results. Doug, why don't you come on up? Is Craig with you? Craig? You lost Craig somewhere in the hallway. All right. And Doug's going to explain more about Leading for Results after we read the resolution from the call.
Whereas the International City County Management Association, referred to as ICMA, is a professional association advancing professional local government and is dedicated to creating and supporting thriving communities throughout the world. Whereas ICMA encourages best practices through its publications, research, and programs. As part of ICMA's efforts to advance the practice of professional local government management, ICMA awards certificates each year to recognize programs and instill a culture of performance management, pursue comparative analysis, and data-informed decision-making, and promote transparency. Whereas the highest-level certificate is the Certificate of Excellence, and the City of Oklahoma City is one of only 25 jurisdictions awarded the Certificate of Excellence in 2017. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby congratulate the Office of Management and Budget and all city departments participating in the Leading for Results program for receiving this recognition from ICMA.
Yes. Leading for Results is a key program here at the city. Our office, the Office of Management and Budget, coordinates that for the city, but it's folks throughout the city that, in each department, that help make that a reality with measuring performance, the strategic business plans that departments create that guide their performance, and the way that the council directs us through their strategic priorities that guide departments. You know, it really is something to think that only 25 jurisdictions throughout the United States get this award, and we're one of those because performance management really is important to the city. And I think it serves our citizens well.
This is a resolution, so I actually need the council vote on it. How about a motion? And second, all right, cast your votes. And to no one's surprise, it has passed unanimously. Doug, get a little bit about the roadmap that this provides on the leadership training and the specific goals that are part of the process.
Right. Well, it begins each year with our citizen survey, where we survey our citizens, find out what the key needs are that they have. That is information that you all, the mayor and council, take and direct us with our strategic council priorities. And then departments are developing their own priorities, their issues that they're facing over the next three to five years. Those then guide the budget proposals that they're putting forward that we'll be reviewing here in the next couple of months. And then there's measures that they're tracking every month that report on of how they're doing against those areas that they're trying to improve in the way we try to provide service to our citizens to make sure we're providing the best value we can for what the citizens give us.
In 2017, Oklahoma City was labeled one of the best managed cities in the country. So congratulations to you and the other managers for that. Thank you all. Let's show our appreciation one more time. And it's time for us to honor our Teacher of the Month, Andrea Selfridge. Andrea, come on up. Andrea is a fifth-grade teacher at Hildale Elementary School in the Putnam City School District. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it.
Whereas Andrea Selfridge has been named Teacher of the Month for January 2018 by the Putnam City Schools Foundation and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City. Andrea grew up in Shawnee and was drawn to teaching by her mother, also an educator, and her fourth-grade teacher, who motivated her at that young age to aspire to have that same impact on her own students one day. Whereas Andrea graduated summa cum laude from Oklahoma Baptist University in 2008 with a degree in early childhood and elementary education. She initially worked as a teaching assistant at Shawnee Public Schools before moving to the position of pre-kindergarten teacher. Whereas Andrea's been teaching fourth and fifth grade at Hildale Elementary in the Putnam City School District since 2010. Andrea's involved with several education committees and after-school activities, and she enjoys working toward being a leader and mentor in the school and district. Whereas Andrea works diligently to develop curriculum and lessons that foster development of the whole child physically, mentally, and socially, and to create an environment in which students learn respect for themselves and others. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do hereby recognize and commend Andrea Selfridge on her selection as January 2018 Teacher of the Month by Putnam City Schools Foundation and the Rotary Club of Oklahoma City.
Let's show our appreciation for Andrea. And once again, I will need a motion and a second from council. Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Andrea, congratulations. You know, there's thousands of teachers in the Oklahoma City metro area, and we've selected you as our Teacher of the Month.
Well, thank you so much. It's been an honor to be recognized. I think, very thankful every day that I get a chance to impact students in their lives and work for a great district in Putnam City who truly values their teachers. Thank you.
Tell me about the importance of pre-K.
Pre-K, I was really great to be able to work in pre-K because that was really the foundation for their schooling. And I got to see what they would have that very first time in school and teach them their letters, their sounds, what they thought schooling would be like, and really helped them to learn to love school. And so, we really enjoyed working there.
And please pass along our congratulations and our thanks to all the teachers on the Looks like we're on item 3C of the council agenda. Is there a motion on the appointment?
Yeah.
All right, cast your votes on 3C. It passes unanimously. And item four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Four A is to receive the journal for January 2nd, and four B is to approve the journal for December 19th.
Yeah.
Comment your questions on the journal. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item five is request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor settled this morning, starting on page nine, under item 9E1A 706 West California Street. We ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item E 9628 Southeast 29th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. Item I 329 Southwest 42nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. And item J 421 Southeast 48th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed. And then moving to page 10, under 9F1A 214 North Blackwelder, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. I 6901 South Miller, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. X 1209 Northwest 42nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. And double A 1304 Northwest 82nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner secured. Moving on to page 11, under items 9G1, item B 706 West California, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item S 329 Southwest 42nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item T 1209 Northwest 42nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item V 421 Southeast 48th Street, we need to strike. The owner has removed. And item W 1304 Northwest 82nd Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, no revocable permits today, so we'll recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, just the claims and payroll today.
Okay.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority for items.
Mayor, just a note that item C is an authorization to allow the Golf Commission to go out and get electronic t-shirts so people can sign up for tee times electronically.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on the PPA. Cast your votes. And it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, again, just the claims and payroll today.
Okay.
All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent document.
That is subject to individual consideration.
All right, are there any individual considerations?
Mayor, item X is the acceptance, or partial acceptance, of the modern street car storage and maintenance facility. And we thought this would be an opportunity to have Doug Smith from Jacobs give us an update on the modern street car.
Wonderful. Doug, come on up.
Well, Doug's coming up. Clerk, I just had one quick point on item O, item number one. That is actually in Ward 6. It's listed as Ward 2.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning, Doug.
City Council. Well, 2018 is going to be a big year for the MAPS 3 street car project. And we're pleased to stand before you today with a recommendation of partial final acceptance of the maintenance facility, which is really the first major piece of the project that we brought to a level of completion. I also have an update on the main line and street car construction for you as well. First, I'd like to remind you a little bit of the programming and design of the facility. It kind of helps understand the construction photos as I go through them. But we laid out the site there at Southern Hudson to come in off of the non-revenue track between Seventh Street and the boulevard, to come in with four tracks for various functions of the street car storage and maintenance. And then at the south end of the facility, there's two future storage tracks that can be built. We've put the fire lane there for now, but in the future, as many as six additional street cars could be stored in those locations. So it is sized for flexibility to be able to expand the system. Currently, it's going to work just fine for the seven street cars that we're ordering. Inside the building, we really have several different functions of the space. And on the north end, you can see in the purple color, that's the office and support space. Then as we move south, we have the service and inspection bay, which includes the pit underneath and the mezzanine above to be able to work on the car, both below or above. And we have the heavy maintenance bay where they can remove the trucks or the wheel and motor assemblies from the bottom of the vehicle. Then moving south, we have the covered wash bay, which is where the trucks and cars can be cleaned. And finally, the storage track there on the south end. Then over to the side, we have the shops and support function where we'll store parts, have storage racks and things like that. So I'll go through those areas with you. Also, we have above a mezzanine, which where the mechanics will do their work. They'll have work benches, shelves, parts, tools, those kinds of items up on the mezzanine level. So here's the finished product. And on the upper left, we have the architect's rendering of the facility. And on the lower right, you can see the finished product. And really pleased at how this turned out. You can see it's really spot-on with the rendering. And also mentioned that the Missouri limestone that was procured for that front wall turned out great. That limestone is a perfect match for the Union Station. And so, we're really proud of how that went together and the final look that we got on the frontage of the facility. It also looks great at night. It's well-lit at night, and you can see the marker sign there lit up, and the parking lot lighting and the parking lot on the north side. Also, and working around the exterior of the building now, we have the patio area. So this is there in the northeast corner of the building, and this is where staff will have a chance to have lunch or take a break. So that's a really nice space there for the staff. And working our way around the east side, we have the vertical folding doors. This is really a unique feature that the architects added to the building. They're a very smooth operating feature, and they open the building to the service and maintenance position and also the heavy maintenance position for the inside, when the cars are brought inside. Then around on the south side, we have the fire lane, and that's secured by automatic gates there. And that's obviously for the emergency functions of the building. And that's also provides that future area for storing additional street cars if we ever needed to do that. And then working around on the west side, this is where a lot of the loading will occur. If a truck needs to be sent out for maintenance, such as wheel truing or something like that, this is where it'll be loaded up and put on a truck, an area where forklifts can run around, and then various tool and parts receiving, those kinds of things. Now moving inside, I'll work my way through the storage bays. And first of all, the service and inspection bay. You can see we have the maintenance pit in place. There are the rails in place, and then the mezzanine above. So this bay is perfectly configured to be able for a street car to be able to pull in, for the mechanics to be able to walk on the roof, and access the equipment above, or to get under it. And then the next bay is the heavy maintenance bay. This is where the trucks can be unpinned and removed from the vehicle to maintain it. The trucks have the four wheels and also the motor on each truck assembly, two truck assemblies per vehicle. And these large yellow lifts that you see are, they slide into the side of the vehicle, and they raise the entire vehicle so the truck can be dropped. And then that device you see right in the center of the track is what we call a bogie lift or a scissor lift. And that's brought up under the vehicle, and it catches the truck. When they unpin it, then they can lower it down and move it around. All that equipment's in place. And then just to the west of that, you see the turntable area. And this turntable is where the trucks are moved, move them around. That turntable can rotate. So you put a truck on it, you can rotate it to the left and roll the truck outside into the wash bay. You can also turn it to the right and put it over there for various kinds of maintenance. Or you can take it straight through and move it toward the outside door to be able to load it onto a truck or whatever you might need to do. Right way here. And then outside, we have the wash track. Excuse me. The wash track is where the street cars will be obviously washed. There's a walk-behind washer that encircles the street car. And you can see the washer unit there. And also, I want to point out here that you can see the embedded rail in this area. And I think this was quite an accomplishment that we pulled this off smoothly because there was really two contracts that did this. The building contractor had to construct the slabs with notches so that the rail could be put in. And then our mainline contractor came in and laid the rail, because that's their expertise, and provided the embedment. And so, really, with the two contractors working together, with the schedules being synchronized properly, with the windows and the schedules, it all came together great. And so, I'm really pleased that that turned out the way it did. And then finally, the storage track. You can see the asphalt concrete there in place around the storage track. And there's some pathways in between the rails, and that's the positions in between the cars, because as many as three vehicles can be stored in the storage track. So that, we have the walkways in place. And then also above, we have the catenary wire, and that's used for charging the vehicles. So this is a position where we'll use the catenary to be able to charge the vehicles. They'll raise the catenary and charge up with the contact wire. In contrast, the two maintenance positions inside have wayside charging plugs that they use to charge up with an extension cord that they plug in. So that's all ready to go. use to charge up with an extension cord that they plug in, so that's all ready to go. Then, we have the work mezzanine above, and you can see the yellow areas or the safety areas where the mechanics are allowed to go, and you only go in this area when there's a street car in position in the track, because there's an island there, you can only get on the island by walking across the top of the street car. So, anyway, that's a very typical maintenance arrangement for the roof. And then, the parts storage area, it's a large room capable of lots of racks and spare parts to be able to, of course, provide the full maintenance of the vehicles. Now, just a little bit about the interiors, this is the general manager's office, the interiors are ready to go, they're ready for the furniture to come in, and then, Embark can go ahead and start occupying the space. And also, beautiful training room there, this is right inside the entry, I know many of you have been to the facility, and so, the training room, ready for furniture as well. So, that's really the tour of the facility. Your agenda item includes a partial acceptance, there were some set-asides, which I'll get into in a minute, but the final numbers on the contract, you can see we had a bid price of approximately 5.7 million, there were nine total change orders, including the ones in the current agenda item, and those total approximately 400,000 for a final contract amount of the 6.1 million. Our change order percentage was right at 7%, with about 1 and 3/4% of that due to some differing site conditions that we ran into when we started excavating the site, we found some old oil tanks, we had to bring some imported fill in to be able to build the foundation, so that was quite a bit of the change order cost, about 100,000 of it. In terms of the schedule dates, we did require in the change order that all the work be completed, with the exception of the owner-provided FFNE by December 31st, that has been accomplished. And then, all the work completed with the owner-provided FFE, we moved that date to January 31st. That allows the city staff some time to complete the procurement of the furnishings and whatever, and get that moved in, and also, some of the storage racks and things that we had in the contract for the contractor to install, they can then finish that up before we occupy. So, the items we deferred, the first two are actually complete, the scissor lift, we're waiting on that to be delivered, and the training for that, and then, the turntable adjustment, those items have all been completed now. And then, the owner-furnished equipment installation, which I mentioned, we wanted our contractor to do that, so that was pushed into a separate maintenance bond, and we still need to finish up an elevator inspection item and get the final certificate of occupancy for the building, and those are very close to being completed. So, the set aside for our contractor was really the owner-furnished equipment installing that. So, that completes the update on the building, happy to take any questions, and otherwise, I'll move into updating the rest of the project.
Okay. Any other questions for Doug on the maintenance facility?
Just, it looks absolutely wonderful, it's a beautiful project, very high design standard for a maintenance facility, which is really important, thank you.
Very good. All right, continue on.
Thank you. All right, so this will be the update of the vehicles and the mainline construction. First, I'll show you a chart that we use in Brookville, that Brookville uses to track the status of the final factory testing, and the Cs indicate all the testing and certification steps that have been completed, and you can see the six vehicle numbers there, we haven't numbered the seventh one, but they're getting ready to start fabricating that in the next month or two. The key point here is that car number one, in the top row, has just passed its first article inspection, or FAI, there in the right column, so that means that that vehicle is ready to ship, and we're excited about that, so now, we're just making sure that our facilities here in Oklahoma City are ready to receive it. We don't want to move too quickly and want to make sure everything's in place and everyone's ready. So, there is a picture of vehicle number one, as you can see, it's all assembled and painted, and so, the final testing is ready, it's got the tag on it, it says Oklahoma City Street Car, so we're excited when the time comes to be able to receive that. The first two vehicles have also been snow-tested in Brookville. Of course, we all know some of the harsh winter that we're experiencing, and Brookville is no exception. This is just a picture of when they happened to have them outside, they were moving them around, they don't leave them outside all the time like this, but it was just an opportunity to see number one and number two outside in the yard, kind of a pretty shot with them out there in the snow. So, really, the first five cars are all assembled like this, they're not all painted, but they're in those final stages of testing, and the way the shipping will work, and I'll actually get to that in the next slide, is where they're dependent on the final acceptance in Brookville, and like I said, the FAI on vehicle number one has been accepted. So, car number one, tentatively, we're scheduling to arrive in mid-February, it could be a little later than that, we just want to make sure that everything's ready with the building, the furniture's in, Embark is ready to occupy the building, we'd really like to have staff there on a daily basis when we put the street car in the building. So, after that, approximately every three weeks, we'll get another car, there's a company called Silk Road that delivers the street cars on a flatbed truck, so they'll bring one in, they'll turn around and drive back to Pennsylvania, they'll load another one up, and they'll bring another one in, so it's just going to be a rotation, once we get number one, it'll be kind of a steady pipeline of street cars coming in. Car number seven is due in approximately July of 2018, that'll be the last one, and then, all the local testing will begin of actually putting the car on our tracks, on testing our systems with, and that's what we call the integrated testing part of the project, more about that in a minute. And moving on to the mainline schedule, the map we have here is what our general contractor uses to track the different phases of the construction, so they're just color-coded, so we can kind of understand the different areas that are working. The current schedule is to complete the Bricktown Loop in April. We have had some impacts by the delivery of our track work, we've made some adjustments in that schedule, but the good news is there's no change in our final completion dates, it's just a change in the milestone, which doesn't really hurt the overall project. And then, in August, we'd complete our Midtown Loop with final completion of all construction work in November of 2018. Those milestones are still on track, which would then lead to Embark being able to schedule the opening in December. Here's a progress map that we use, and this is a progressive map, so the purple is, or the blue is where really the utilities have been completed, but all the other areas, such as green, that those utilities have already been cleared, so it's a build. So, what this shows basically is that our utilities on Broadway and 4th Street, and most of 11th Street across the north end, all those have been cleared, and that's really good news, because we're approaching a level where we're 80 to 90% complete with utilities, and that's one of our highest-risk items, both in terms of cost and schedule, so we're really excited to get those things done and out of the way, as we call it, getting out of the ground. The track demo work is ongoing, you've probably seen some of that, that's happening in Robinson right now, and also, the track, embedded track installation, you can see the green areas, so the Bricktown Loop is, most of it is done, we're working our way north on Hudson from Sheridan, some of North Robinson is done, some of 10th Street is done, and now, those embedded track areas are going to quickly start filling in as we work our way towards July and August. OCS foundations are another high-risk item, these foundations are 10 to 15 feet deep, so we have to drill a big, deep hole, we have a lot of utility interferences with those that we have to deal with, and the Bricktown Loop, we have those OCS foundations done, and also, we have poles going up, which I'll show you a picture of that, but also, on the north end, we have many of the OCS foundations on Broadway done, most of the 11th Street OCS foundations are done, working our way around the rest of the north end, so we're probably 60% complete with those, and again, as we put those away, another risk item in the project gets done. Station stops, you can see the ones that are labeled pink there, all of the Bricktown stops are ready, and several of the other stops are either in progress or completed. Traction Power substations, we have six of those, you can see marked in the green there, the three in the south, which include the two in Bricktown and TPS6, which is down the maintenance facility, those are all complete, they're turned on, they're ready to go, and the three in the north end are in a phase of construction, so those are going great. We started the project, we were concerned about equipment delivery schedules, all that has worked out fine. And then, finally, the overhead contact wire there in red, we do have that done on the Hudson non-revenue track, and that wire will be going up soon in Bricktown, now with the poles in place. So, here's a shot of the Bricktown poles, OCS poles going in, cantilever arms have been put on, and now, we're, like I said, we're getting ready to install the wire in there in the next couple of months. Here's an example of the OCS pole being installed up in Midtown, you can see the auger rig that does that. Rail poles are ongoing, you know, the project almost never sleeps, except on days like today, it does, but it's, but the nighttime rail poles are ongoing, so this will be, here's one happening on Broadway in the middle of the night, and here's some of the rail embedment activity there near the traffic signal in Midtown, and also, at EK Gaylord and Reno. This is also an example of where we have a turnout, now, this is a receiver turnout, where the southbound EK Gaylord on that turnback, it'll come in and merge with the westbound track on Reno, so those track work pieces are now getting encapsulated and set into the street, glad to have that intersection in progress. And the rail embedment at Stop 5, you might recall, Stop 5 is kind of our signature stop, it's there, near the new convention center, it's there across from Chesapeake, and it's a double-track special platform, so we're glad to see that going in, and you can see that rail being embedded. And then, as we go around, we go back and we clean up some of the areas adjacent to the tracks, so right outside of City Hall here, you see asphalt pavement being replaced, and then, there's one in Reno in Bricktown with the brick being replaced and set back in. Platform construction, you can see the new platform there on the south side of the Cox Center along Reno, and so, those are ongoing, and then, our maintenance yard, I showed you the picture of the storage track, but this is also, you can see some of the additional walkways going in, and all that rail in the yard is ready to go, in fact, the rail, of course, is complete all the way from the maintenance facility, all the way up to the Oklahoma City Boulevard, and so, that'll be ready for our testing. Traction Power substations, the two in Bricktown are green, the rest of them are a beige color, and we selected the ballpark green for the two Bricktown substations, so this is TPS number five there by the Flamingo West Alley near the ballpark. So, just a word about integrated testing and commissioning, because this is a lot of what'll be happening when we start to get the mainline construction done. The Brookville will start to be on-site with their factory representatives, once a vehicle arrives, they have factory staff on hand in our maintenance facility to start putting the final pieces on it that they took off for shipping, and then, they'll start running it through testing. And so, the maintenance facility and the Hudson non-revenue track, or NRT, will be going through and doing integrated tests, so again, this is where we put things together, the vehicles, the maintenance facility systems, the mainline track, you know, does the vehicle fit properly on the track, we sure hope it does, TPS6, the overhead contact system, all these things work together in this integrated testing. So, the south end with the maintenance facility and non-revenue track will start here, we've already started some of it, but it'll continue through March. The Bricktown Loop will continue that once we open that up with the same kinds of systems, and then, finally, the Midtown Loop, looking at that all the way to November. There are active committees and teams that supervise all this integrated testing, and this is all to be in alignment with FTA requirements, with ODOT-SSO requirements, the State Safety Office, so that when the time comes and we're ready to open the system, they'll be able to sign off and say, yes, you tested everything properly, and we're ready to certify the system, so you can open it as a transit system. So, these committees include the Safety and Security Certification Committee, Fire and Life Safety, we have a, right now, a meeting monthly with police and fire, talking about any of their concerns about vulnerability or threats to the system, making sure their questions are answered, and they're ready to support the overall testing and opening of the system. I mentioned the integrated system testing, and then, there's a rail activation committee, which looked at the whole schedule and all the activities that go into getting this ready to open, making sure that everyone's doing what they're supposed to be doing, and all the documentation is put in place. So, that's kind of a long-winded update of what's going on, we do have a lot going on, but that completes the update and happy to answer any questions.
All right, questions? Very exciting, thanks for the update.
You're welcome, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? All right, let's vote, passes unanimously. Item Eight is the concurrence docket. All right. Any comments or questions here? Cast your votes, passes unanimously. Item Nine, there are items that require a separate vote, we'll start with a zoning case in Ward One, this is in, let's see, it's an address of 13400 West Memorial Road, it's currently double-A agricultural, and it would be put into a new PUD if it's approved. Larry?
Yes, Your Honor, James asked me if I would introduce this and handle moving it through, and Item A of Section Nine and Item H are companion items, and Aubrey has a presentation, and we'd like the privilege of switching A and H, because it makes more sense to do the thing on the overall comp plan and then come into the zoning.
Okay. All right, why don't we move ahead then, have Aubrey give the presentation on Item H, and then, we'll go back and revisit Item A.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Item H is to receive a comprehensive plan amendment that changed the land use category, and it was in conjunction with a request from this applicant to do this rezoning. So, as you know, the comprehensive plan is a living, breathing document, and we make every effort to keep it updated and relevant. So, you're familiar with this map, this map shows the land use typology areas across the city, which designates the types of uses and density ranges that are appropriate to different areas within Oklahoma City. And this land use request is happening up there in Ward One, and I'm showing you a close-up of the site, so the original land use typology assignment for this was rural low density, which is the lowest possible density of development in Oklahoma City, with an overlay, and the overlay is called agricultural preserve. The applicant was hoping to develop this property consistent with the land that you see in the dark green land use typology that's to the north and the east, which is designated as rural medium intensity. Go that way, yeah, one more slide, please. So, just to describe the characteristics of these three different land use designations, the original designation as rural low intensity allows large lot residential acreages of five acres and up. The reason that it was designated as rural low is because at the time of the assignment, there was no expectation of urbanization or extension of water or sewer service in that area. The agricultural preserve layer was put on that because it typically characterizes these types of large-scale acreages that were in use for agricultural purposes, oftentimes, these land areas are located in undevelopable flood plains as well. So, the rural medium intensity land use typology that this application is associated with has characteristics like rural low intensity, except for they have a little bit higher residential densities, typically two acres and up. These are often located in areas that are adjacent to higher-density urban low-intensity designations, or areas that are reserved for urban growth. These areas typically have some potential to connect to partial services like city water or sewer, and typically have higher fire response times. So, this map shows the fire response, and you can see that this site is located in a higher rural response time than the red, which would be a low, typically rural response time. The characteristics of this site, like we looked at in the previous map showing the lot configurations, is really consistent with that rural medium density range, and the site also has city water available and within the range of requiring to connect. So, because of its proximity to the fire station, because of its access to city water, and because of its surrounding consistency with other land uses, Planning Commission adopted this comprehensive plan amendment, and we are here to answer any questions, and have you received the comp plan amendment prior to the zoning.
Okay, any questions for Aubrey? All right, looks like we're good to go, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then, we'll bring us back to Item A. Larry?
Now, Item A is a zoning case, Aubrey here, he was presented with a finding, he's in accord, this particular... With what we just heard, and James would like to have it moved for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, we're voting on Item 9A, cast your votes, it passes unanimously. Item 9B is a public hearing, this would adopt and confirm the assessment role for the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right, how about a motion then to move it along?
Move for approval.
Cast your votes on 9B, passes unanimously. And Item 9C is the ordinance now... And item nine C is the ordinance now for final hearing, and again, this would adopt and ratify the Western Avenue Business Improvement District. Move for approval, motion? Second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. All right, nine D is a public hearing regarding our Parks and Recreation Department. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on item nine D? This is an item that was introduced to council a couple of weeks back. All right, how about a motion then?
I am.
Come on up. We'll need your name and address, please, for the record.
Yes, Michael Washington, 2400 Northeast Eighteenth Street. Now, nine D. Let me go see what nine D look like. Public hearing regarding ordinances relating to Park Recreation Cultural Affairs Amendment, Section 39. Oh my God, I don't remember. I wasn't here on this one. Y'all got me on it. I'm gonna have to pass this one right now. I wasn't here. Y'all got away, got lucky.
All right, cast your votes on nine D. It passed unanimously. Nine E is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine E?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I might need to speak on nine E, public hearing. Again, now, let me see what we got in Ward seven right quick. Oh, I ain't reading on F yet, are we? Let's look at 201, 201 Southeast Seventeenth Street, AKA 1720 South Walnut Avenue. There's some out of some Stone Age stuff there. What in the world is that? What we planning on doing with this? Take it down? Okay, you got my approval. Next, golly, Jesus Christ. Okay, we got 3127 Northwest Seventeenth Street. Okay, what's up with that? Okay, I see, look like it's burning up, whatever, cracking, falling apart. Okay. 421 Southeast Forty-Eighth Street. That's striking, okay. 329 Southwest Forty-Second Street. Stricken, oh, okay. 2616 Southwest Thirty-Eighth Street. Now, you know what? I'm gonna tell y'all what, I'm getting ready to sit down, but y'all absolutely right. I mean, people should not be exposed to this kind of thing. I've seen enough, I'm gone, that's good.
All right, cast your votes on nine E. Passed unanimously. Item nine F is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine F?
Yes.
How about a motion? Yes, come on up, sir. Good morning.
How you doing?
We'll need your name and address for the record.
Hey, Bernard Davis, 1221... That's my mother's address. 12921 Blue Quail Drive in Jones, Oklahoma.
Okay, and which item were you wanting to speak about?
I am going to... I stepped out ahead for a phone call, but I missed both items. But the other one is on 1808 North Bryant.
Yes.
I had a problem with the homeless keep taking my boards down and going in. I went back past week and re-secured the property, so all boarded up, the windows is up. I just got ahold of it, got control of it about six months ago. I'm planning on this to revamp it and to open it back up again. So problem is, I got homeless, and some guys came, looked at the windows there, someone came and took the boards off the windows and took all of the aluminum off of it. They went and took all of my copper out and just kind of took the building down. And so what I'm trying to do is get it pulled back up. You see in the back, back there where they pulled all the meters out of it and everything. And so I having a problem in keeping them from getting into the building.
Yeah, I'm sorry to hear that.
I guess I probably need to put a fence up around it or something, but...
Charles, do you have anything to add?
He'll have a chance in the next week or so to secure it before...
It's secured now.
Okay.
Bet you're fine.
All right, you should be fine. You should get Charles's business card, though, so you can stay in touch with him. If this is a continuing scene, please also get our police department involved, and maybe we can help you on the vandalism.
Okay, all right.
Okay, thanks for coming. Nine F, yeah.
Good. Michael Washington, 2400, excuse me, 1800, 2900 Northeast Eighteenth Street. I'm in pretty good jovial mood this morning, y'all, so y'all might have to prepare for that. Now, but again, get very serious here. Look like, let's see here, a couple of Ward sevens. 3201 Maloney Drive, that's a house. Okay, now, what are we talking... Okay, what are we talking about with that? You say it's abandoned.
No, it's unsecured.
Oh, unsecured, okay. So what are we talking about doing with that?
Well, there's no garage door. The owner needs to put a garage door on it and secure the building.
Okay, that seems pretty reasonable, definitely. I mean, stepping in a person living in an environment like this shouldn't be exposed to it, that makes sense. Okay, you got 1601 Northeast Fifteenth Street. You know, dilapidation, I'm against dilapidation, y'all believe that now. So I'm not just all people arguing, but I just want to make sure these people are giving out the proper notices that they need to correct these measures.
These aren't dilapidated, they're just unsecured.
Yeah, well, also, they're not still not dilapidated, it still look like to me. Okay. So they need what, what's secured within what amount of time?
The next couple of weeks.
That's just asking, okay. 1204 Northeast Nineteenth Street. Oh, yeah, the building, okay, one now, that makes sense to find them, yeah, okay. They could, vandalism, whatever, yeah. Crack heads and different things could come... Yeah, I'm agreeing, I'm not arguing, okay. 609 Northwest Hundred and Fourteenth Street. It looks like that needs to be corrected. Okay, yeah, let me see, is that all Ward seven? Yeah, all right, thank you, I just...
All right, let's vote on item nine F. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine G is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under nine G?
Yes, I am.
Now, we're talking about the abandonment, that's what I want to get to. Nine G, okay, 1808 North Bryant Avenue, commercial building, Ward seven. I wonder if the city trying to take that? Let's see what's going on with that. For some personal use like it been doing. That's right up the street from me, isn't it? So what are we talking about with that?
That's the one you just looked at.
No, 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 not that one.
Yes, what?
This is Mr. Davis's property.
The one that just spoke?
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, okay, you're giving him a chance to straighten it out. Okay, go ahead. 1712 East U-Bank Street, taxicar. I might want to buy some of these buildings, that's why I'm asking. Oh, I don't want to buy that one. Okay, so what are we talking about doing with that? What are we talking about doing with that?
It's abandoned, means that nobody lives there, and it's going to be secured.
By who?
It'll be secured by us if the owner doesn't do it.
Okay, so you talked it on already?
Sent him a notice.
Okay, you sent him, and who was that? I represent the northeast side, unlike this guy here, that's why I'm going to talk to him if they don't secure it. Then I'm gonna come down and say, yeah, take this man's property because he don't act right. But we're gonna make sure you get due process, though. That's what I'm getting at.
Any other properties, Michael?
Yeah, I'm trying to see what he's talking about on this thing here first. I need to know when he sent the note, don't I have right to know when he sent a notice out?
I'm sure we can get that to you.
No, I need to know it now, because then I know whether to move on to something else. Yeah, just like you do anybody else that's speaking, take your time, sir.
January 3rd.
Okay, January 3rd, so he hadn't gotten back in yet, okay, so January... Oh, he just not got no, so he got what, two weeks from January 3rd?
No, these are just to be placed on the list.
Right, and then after, placed on list, what happened?
On the abandoned list, nothing happens unless there's like a fire or something.
Okay, so they still gonna retain the property, and so in other words, just waste the paperwork then?
Correct, we never take the property.
You get to put the city to it?
No.
Oh, yeah, okay. Abandoned property, so can you explain to me what abandoned properties mean then? I mean, you know, you gonna find them, or what are you talking about? That's what I'm trying to figure out, so I can go back and talk to them. You gonna find them, you gonna make a move out of state? I'm trying to figure what's going on.
No, abandoned property is, means that the properties that have been declared dilapidated or unsecured are placed on the abandoned list.
Right.
And unless something else happens like a fire or something, and until the owner requests it, it stays on the list until it's removed at the owner's request.
Okay, so nothing gonna happen to them then, so we can just leave it on that for years and years to come then, right? So in other words, just on the list.
It's on the list until the owner removes it, yes.
Okay, so what if the owner don't remove it?
Or until it becomes unsecured or becomes dilapidated.
See, that's what I'm getting at, okay. Now, Maloney, okay, now, this is what confused me, because y'all had it one hit, and now we move to nine G from where it was previously spoken about. You know, that's what's confusing me here. Okay, let's go to FG, Section F, 3201 Maloney Drive. Okay, now, now, okay, right, now, that's about the...
So that property is both unsecured, and it's now on the abandoned list.
Right.
But it's both abandoned and unsecured.
Right, now, so abandoned means then that you can come in later on and say, since nobody wanted it's abandoned, we can preserve it for city reasons then, right? Tear it down or whatever, dematerial, it won't be destructive to the community then?
No, sir.
Oh, so again, they extend, I like that, that's good, I'm glad I got that. I hope they're recording this, so make sure there ain't no change of mind here. Okay, 1601 Northeast Fifteenth Street, Ward seven. Okay, so now, again, since she spoke, sir, this building is not gonna happen, so it can just be in there for years and do what it wants to be. So in other words, what I'm trying to tell you, why are you giving them notices and things if they decide they don't want to do anything with it? I mean, that don't make sense.
It's listed on unsecured because it's unsecured. And if they have an opportunity to secure it themselves, or we will secure it for...
That's what I'm getting at, right.
On an abandoned property, we put it on the abandoned list, which means that we declare it as abandoned, and then if things happen to it and it becomes dilapidated in the future, or if it becomes a nuisance and we have to make a lot of fire calls or police calls out there, we can charge the property owner for those, for those public safety responses.
Mm-hmm, so again, you wouldn't have a right to tear it down then, so he can keep it then, even if it's hanging on his last hinges then, he can still, he can still let his property do what he want to.
Well, if it's hanging on his last hinges, I would assume it would be dilapidated, and we'd have the right to tear it down at that point.
Now, see, you're coming with me on it, that's what I'm talking about. Now, what is determined what dilapidation is, though? See, now you're getting a world point where the public can understand. I represent the northeast side, I got to go back and tell these people, I came, they sent me down here to talk to you people about these properties, what they can and can't do, because we getting them filed some lawsuits on somebody that's supposed to be an Ward seven councilman for us. I'm not gonna look at him, because you know what I'm talking about. Anyhow, that's why I'm gonna go back and make sure that this meeting is recorded here. All right, now, 201 Southeast Seventeenth Street. Oh, I said one. But I'm trying to figure out, y'all have not told me yet what is determined by dilapidation. You said, I gave you that mindset by hanging on his hinges. Is that what determines if it's just hanging on his hinges, a last leg? Is that what determines it?
It's defined by statute, and we can provide you with a copy of the statutes, all the statutes since state law.
I appreciate you, you're right, I was just asking question because we had a public meeting. I know about the statutes. Okay, now...
Michael, let us move on, okay?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out, because I need to find out what these places look like. 1204 Northeast Nineteenth Street. Okay, now, that's considered abandoned, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right, let me see, let me get one more. 1427 Northeast Twenty-Fifth Street. Now, I mean, consider, I'm thinking this is the last one here now, considered abandoned. I mean, this cause no one is living in, I mean, I mean, that's their property, though. How am we gonna say it's abandoned when I have a right to just leave my horse on it and never come see along this fair? I'm trying to get that. How is it abandoned?
Well, because it's been placed on the unsecured list to be secured by the owner or the city.
Yeah, okay, right, to be secured, but now abandoned, that seem like that's a short-sighted way to say, well, you know, if you don't act right, we're gonna come in and probably take it.
No, we don't take it.
You know what I'm saying? Okay, all right, well, that's enough right now.
All right, let's vote on nine G. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Nine H, we saw the presentation by Aubrey, will look for a motion to approve the resolution. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine I is a resolution receiving an amendment to the comprehensive plan, and Aubrey's back.
Good morning again, Mayor and Council, Aubrey McDermott, Planning Director. Before you is a kind of a comprehensive, comprehensive plan amendment. When we adopted Plan OKC in 2015, we committed to doing a biannual update. This is the first biannual update we've done since the plan's adoption. City staff, departments, people who work with the plan have all been using it to evaluate development proposals. Through the last two years, we've learned that there are some things in there in the plan that we can strengthen, that we can clarify. We've kept a list of those types of improvements that we could make to the plan, and this encapsulates all of those different things, and I wanted to just guide you through what we've done here. So we've made modifications to the first chapter of the comprehensive plan, which is the purpose and process. You may remember when we did some council briefings and we had some Planning Commission study sessions a while back about when an applicant petitions the city to make annexations and de-annexations to help them provide the proper materials and to give the proper types of background and information to you as decision-makers. So we've incorporated the text that we reviewed with you and into the comprehensive plan. We've also made some changes to the development guide, which is the section of the plan that people use for that day-to-day development review. And we've added an appendix to the plan, which then documents all of the plan's changes that have happened since plan adoption to today, and we will maintain that into the future. So the annexations and detachments section of the plan now is located in the very beginning. It basically just adds background information that a petitioner should include in their application to the city, and some possible considerations that decision-makers like you and recommending bodies like the Planning Commission may think about to ensure that the action that you take does provide a tangible benefit to Oklahoma City and its residents, and is in conformance with our comprehensive plan. The other thing that we added to the comprehensive plan is further definition within our transportation element to define a livable streets concept. You may have heard a concept called complete streets or livable streets. This is basically principles of design for cities to take to ensure that you're building a multimodal transportation system that serves all residents. We already had a lot of these philosophies and this language in our comprehensive plan. The term livable streets is now the term that's being, is replacing the term complete streets. So we wanted to add some of that language to the comprehensive plan. Basically, what it does is it defines what the concept of livable streets is, it adds one principle to the comprehensive plan related to that, and it updates one goal in our transportation planning chapter to ensure that every opportunity we get, we assess what types of improvements we could make to our transportation system that are possible within that street and that is related to land uses. This is what the page looks like. The red boxes show areas that have been amended within the comprehensive plan, so you can see that there's a section that's been added to define those livable streets principles. We also have added the one guiding principle that integrates all modes of transportation, including walking, cycling, and public transit where possible, and it establishes different types of street typologies in the comprehensive plan that give you guidelines for how to design a street. So as we have opportunities through the next general obligation bond, we can look to the comprehensive plan to help guide what types of improvements might be possible and appropriate for that street corridor.
Aubrey, does it say where possible?
It does.
Okay.
And that's always the consideration, is that we have guidelines for what we think ultimately that street could accomplish, but of course, it's going to be based on the available right-of-way, the funding that's available through what's been allocated in the bond proposition, and engineering. So we have to look at it as every case arises to make sure that we can do what we hope to do.
I totally appreciate the approach and the focus on walkable and livable streets. I think we've got some people here to talk about that, but I just want to be sure that it really does enunciate that where possible. 622 square miles, not possible everywhere.
That is correct, right. And it is really the philosophy that we look for those opportunities where possible and where appropriate. And the comprehensive plan serves as the guideline, kind of the aspirational ideal standard for every street topology, but it really does come down to doing the analysis on the ground. The guiding principle in the plan is stated as integrating all modes of transportation, including walking, cycling, and public transit where available, and then it follows up with a goal, uh, and the, uh, chapter on transportation. And this is here, in the transportation system, it was already stated as a goal for our transportation system to be safe, convenient, and providing a variety of interconnected modes where, uh, livable streets policies apply, is that it balances needs of users throughout the transportation network. And then you can see that we've added another initiative to, to, um, the transportation element of the comp plan to develop livable streets, and this is where that language, councilman, is drafted, that we will hope to ensure over time as, as resources are available and as, um, existing conditions allow, that we will look for those opportunities and implement them as we can.
My comment, it's a very laudable aspiration. I just don't wanna set people's expectations above what we can actually accomplish.
And to that point, the reason that the term complete streets has been replaced with livable streets is because sometimes people would interpret that to mean every street had to have every possible mode of transportation available, which was not the intent, and every street cannot accommodate every type of transportation option. Livable streets means that overall your transportation network provides multiple options for people where they need to get into the transportation system and travel to their destination. The next section updated some of our land use typology areas, which we just reviewed in our, uh, last comprehensive plan amendment update, and here again is our land use typology map. And each of these land use typologies has a page, the setup of the page is shown here. So typically, the land use typology page describes the characteristics within that land use typology, that's shown in that section one. Section two highlights the typical density ranges for development within that typology area. And the third section on the bottom half of the page describes development policies that could be used to, to guide site design and building form and connectivity as you review a development proposal. So what we've done is we've updated some of the text in the, in these four different land use typology areas, rural, urban, employment reserve, and heavy industrial. Some of these are really minor cleanups, just to provide clarification. Um, for example, in the urban reserve area, we needed some more definition, and we added a few sentences that explained the purpose and the characteristics of those areas. For employment reserve, we also added a description of the typical size of parcels that are found in that land use typology area. And for heavy industrial, we described the types of appropriate uses that typically exist within heavy industrial. And this really does help when an applicant comes in trying to propose a development type, so that you have that clarity in the description of those typologies. We also adjusted these, uh, tables describing the density range. Uh, they were not consistent with each other for the different land use typology areas, and we really found that we needed to have a consistent definition. We use gross density when evaluating a, a comprehensive plan amendment, so we wanted to make all of them reflect gross density ranges, which is the total number of units divided by the land area. So for example, the case that you just saw had a gross density of a half acre, .5 units per acre. And the reason that they achieved that is because they preserved some common areas and open spaces, even though their lots per acre might have gone smaller than one, if that makes sense. So we, uh, we also made it consistent now that we express lot sizes as a range, rather than stating it's a typical lot size within that land use typology area, or that it's a minimum lot size. We provided that for flexibility when you calculate gross density. And we updated some of our development policies related to those four, uh, land use typology areas. Um, one of them was at an oversight, in that our open space land use typology did not state the same statement about avoiding development within the 100-year floodplain that all of our other land use typology areas do. In the rural low intensity area, we tried to update our policies to be consistent with other development policies found in the comprehensive plan, to describe where commercial development would be appropriate in those lower density rural areas. We also clarified some language in our rural medium areas where cluster development may be appropriate, and how to achieve those gross densities by preserving open space, and where commercial development would be appropriate. Uh, within the urban medium intensity area, we deleted some texts that limited where we felt automobile connectivity should be encouraged, because automobile connectivity is really encouraged throughout the city where possible. So as I referenced before, we had additional development-related policies that do apply to development review, however, they were found in the back of the plan. And one of the, um, things that we've done with Plan OKC is we've extracted our development guide into a separate little handout document, it's a lot easier and more user-friendly for developers to use, which is the entire chapter two. But those development-related policies were in the end of this giant comprehensive plan. So we've taken those and moved them into the chapter two development guide, so that everything is contained together. Um, and the last section of this is the land used... The land use compatibility section. In working with a land use compatibility section, this is where you evaluate a development proposal based on what's going on around it. And Plan OKC provides different types of triggers where you might trigger a compatibility issue that you provide mitigation. Thanks, Philip. Okay, if you can get me back there, I'll keep away from touching that. So we've just found that there were some calculations that, um, helped people decide where that trigger of compatibility might be met, that were really difficult to calculate, difficult and confusing to apply. We've updated, um, procedures and processes to be easier to guide people through, and that's what this chart shows. The next one is, uh, further illustration to define these concepts of gross density. So you see the red box on the bottom has that illustrative graphic showing that you could achieve 30 units per acre if you spread them across the acre, or you could provide 30 units if you do a conservation-type, uh, open space preservation plan. And the compatibility charts were also, uh, enhanced with other types of illustrative graphics, showing how floor-to-area ratio is calculated, and this is a planning term that a lot of people use, but is really kind of difficult to understand. Okay? And on our compatibility charts and tables, we just found some minor errors that we corrected. We also wanted to update the definitions for these different, uh, compatibility, uh, land use compatibility ranges to be more consistent with our zoning code. I did it again, I promised I wouldn't, I'm gonna move this. Sorry about that. Okay? And this is more clarification about when those triggers are achieved and how you might provide mitigation once you, uh, trip a trigger, and this is, for example, if you have residential development, um, next to commercial or office development, and they're proposing a height that exceeds a certain ratio to the residential. This is a common issue that's discussed on planning commission in terms of people's privacy, and seeing developments next door to them, being able to look down into their backyards. So there's a ratio calculation there that we've tried to, uh, clarify and make easier to use, and providing some different strategies for mitigating those measures, like step backs, reducing heights, or stepping down in height next to those areas. And then last, we updated our land use typology maps. We reevaluated the entire city existing conditions, um, we looked at development opportunities and the appropriateness of different types of developments within these areas, and found that the heavy industrial, urban reserve, and employment reserve areas needed a little bit more refined land use typology adjustments. So in the heavy industrial areas, we looked for areas that really were serving more light industrial or residential uses. It makes it more difficult to develop heavy industrial uses next to these. We also removed the land that was designated heavy industrial that's within our scenic river overlay design district and along our hospitality corridor of Meridian, because the land uses within those really are, are tending and want to be more commercial and, uh, entertainment uses. We also looked at the transportation network and its ability to provide access to heavy industrial uses, and where it was hard to serve those transportation uses like rail or highway that are really attractive and appropriate for heavy industrial. We looked for opportunities to, uh, remove some of the heavy industrial land for more compatible light industrial development. And here's, uh, a map showing the areas that we just described, highlighted in red, that have been changed from heavy industrial to whatever the, the, uh, base land use typology area was. Okay?
Aubrey, could you more fully describe what the changes to the scenic river overlay corridor?
Yeah, if you'll go back one slide, Philip. Uh, to the map, let's look at the map. So in the area one, you can see that the scenic river area had a base Luda of urban low intensity, which provides that range of office, residential, commercial uses. And as we were evaluating this area originally, it had pockets of industrial uses that seemed consistent with heavy industrial. However, heavy industrial land use would really prevent those commercial uses from developing within scenic river. So wherever the city had zoned the scenic river overlay, we removed the heavy industrial layer. Okay? And then the urban reserve layers, this is a, this is, um, a designation for areas that are eminently urbanizable as city services become available, it's the next tier of urban development in Oklahoma City. We looked for opportunities where Oklahoma City's efficiency for providing service, such as water, sewer, police and fire response, were ready to be released for urban development. So we looked at areas where, uh, water and sewer service have been provided, uh, we looked at areas where police response and fire response time have been improved, and we found a few areas, there's small pockets, if you go to the next one. These little small pockets show those different areas in Oklahoma City where, uh, those, those land areas are ready to be urbanized. And then employment reserve is the last area. This, uh, employment reserve designation was based on a study that was done many years ago, looking for large parcels of land in Oklahoma City that would be attractive to large employment uses. So a lot of these are large undeveloped parcels, they were next to highways and interchanges, and some of the land that was existing within that was zoned R1 but never developed. And so we reviewed which parcels were zoned for residential development, which is not a compatible type of development next to large employment uses. There was one case that came forward that asked to develop under their existing zoning, under their development rights, and it was at South County Line Road here and 29th Street. So the planning commission recommended that it was appropriate to allow them to develop under that zoning that they had, because the employment reserve designation really kept intact for a large parcel that would be developable as large employment uses. So that change was a comprehensive plan amendment request that came in at the same time that we were updating the full comprehensive plan. And then again, the, uh, tracking section at the end of the plan is just a table that we capture all of our comp plan changes, so people can easily reference what's been done and what date and where it applied in the plan. And that's the overview of our comp plan amendments, we're here to answer questions and hope that you can receive these amendments.
I think the one thing, uh, Plan OKC, which was adopted in 2015, if you look at the, the previous comprehensive plan, which was back around 1977, um, I, I applaud and encourage that we look at the, this plan and we make clarifications, and it is a document that breathes change. And so I'm hopeful that, uh, in the next couple of years, this will happen again.
We've committed to doing that, and we believe that every two years is about the right timeframe to look back and see how the plan is working, if there's any area of improvement. And this first round was, um, a good test, because as you could see by the nature of the amendments, they were really fairly minor. So I think in working with the plan, we found that it's, it's, it's working well.
And I guess the other question I'd have is, are we receiving input from landowners, developers, et cetera, uh, for the, the purpose of clarifying the plan?
Yes, in fact, a lot of those clarifications were made, because we've been working with applicants who have asked us, we're not really sure how to do this, we're not sure how it applies. So as we've, uh, kept those notes over time, they've, um, resulted in these, this list of amendments, and we'll continue to do that.
I really appreciate Steph doing this.
Yeah, Aubrey, I have to agree, it really feels great that this is working, and that the minor tweaks are clarification and, um, you know, and changes in the community in the last two years, which, if we don't keep up with it, you know, we just will, um, not be an able partner with the development community to, to grow, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, how about a motion then on 9I? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And 9J?
And the next item is a resolution, um, expressing the council's intent to implement livable streets policies over time. The reason that we came to you with a resolution is that many cities of our size and many cities of our, um, ability to create a, a transportation system that works for all people have done this type of resolution. And as we discussed previously, this is our intent to work among all city departments and the community, to look for opportunities to increase the different access and availability to modes of transportation in Oklahoma City. That's what this expresses, and this is a good tool for our city to have, being supported by council, because a lot of agencies and granting, uh, grant funds may be available to communities who have a policy like this one. So over time, as we've worked with different groups and organizations that have said, does, does Oklahoma City have a livable streets policy? We said, almost, we're, we're getting there, we're working on it. So that's what this would officially do.
Well, thank you for pulling it out and specifically identifying it as a resolution. I would move approval.
All right, we're voting on item 9J. We have a person who would like to speak in favor of this, uh, from the American Heart Association. Come on up. Good morning, you might wanna pull that microphone down.
Oh, shorty.
There you go.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can I name an address for the record, please?
Yes, it's Chardet or Teas, and my address is 10300 Southwestern, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73139. Um, I work for the American Heart Association, I am the administrative associate for the advocacy department. Um, and we know there that, we believe that Oklahoma City residents deserve to travel safely around the city, no matter what their mode of travel is, biking, walking, um, bus or vehicle. Um, and we know that they... Uh-oh, I'm nervous. And we know that they need sidewalks and... They need sidewalks and roads to accommodate their mode of travel. We at the American Heart Association and our volunteers here in the Oklahoma City area are thrilled, um, for all of the city departments involved that have worked so hard to make a safe and active transportation a priority here in the city. By considering to include livable streets concepts in Plan OKC, you're helping to make Oklahoma City an active and healthier place to work, live, and play. Thank you so much again for your leadership and for prioritizing the health and safety of all Oklahomans.
Thanks for your support. All right, is there a motion for 9J? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. 9K, I understand we do not need executive session?
That's correct.
Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. 9K passed unanimously. 9L, I understand we do not need executive session?
Correct.
Cast your votes. 9L passed unanimously. 9M, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
Cast your votes. 9M moves to executive session. 9N, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item 9O, I understand we do need executive session?
Yep.
Okay, cast your votes. That item moves into executive session. Item 9P is claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here hoping to speak, or any item listed under 9P? All right, how about a motion? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10A is claims recommended for approval. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 11 is items, council. Item 11A is a resolution which would support Councilman Pettis's attendance at the National League of Cities Meeting in DC, March 11th to the 14th. Is there a motion to move that forward? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. John, thanks for your participation in that. Mark?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just briefly, um, Neighborhood Alliance is conducting a workshop on February 3rd, that's Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and it's a leadership workshop. Everyone's invited, invited to attend, it's called Connect the Dots, a workshop and panel discussion about leadership in OKC. We were planning on probably 30, maybe 40 people signing up, uh, we already have well over 100 people that have signed up.
My gosh.
So, uh, I encourage everybody to sign up soon, because we'll run out of space.
Okay. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna thank everyone who, uh, had a chance to attend the different Martin Luther King services this past weekend, despite the cold, um, the different programs and different events, um, were very well put on. So again, thank you, thank you everyone for being involved, thank you.
All right, Meg?
Manager, maybe just something that we can look at going forward, we've been talking a lot about streets today and transportation, and, um, I, I think I'm aware that we've received an RTA grant recently to help do some maybe upgrades on bus service and...
And I'd like to take a look again at Sunday bus service. I mean, I know we're looking hard at lots of other things, and dollars are scarce, but maybe Jason could just give us an update on what it would take to do some limited Sunday bus service and see if there's a way to integrate some of that.
Okay.
Sure.
Larry? Ed?
Echo Meg's comments, and I appreciate that. On Sunday bus service, and then I would just look for guidance and help from the council, and I still have this adult novelty store issue. I have two constituents use their 401K to buy a franchise. Been working with Kenny and just trying to find a solution. It turns out that there's a state statute that is identical to the city statute, and I would, of the ideas that he threw out as possible, I would, I'd throw out maybe just rescinding Oklahoma City's 20-year-old resolution, which is redundant to the state, leave it up to the state, and just take the city out of it. Be open to any thoughts, or if not, maybe propose that in a couple of weeks to just rescind it, take the city of Oklahoma City out of it, and let it be a state issue. Any thoughts on that, or maybe just think of it over the next couple of weeks, and bring it back in two weeks. Thanks.
Okay. All right, city manager reports.
We do have the sales tax report on from January. It was a pretty good month. We won't go into great deal of, or great deal of detail on it at this point in time, as we'll be having our financial budget workshop in a few weeks, and we'll bring our economists in, talk about long-term trends, and talk in more detail about it at that point in time. And Councilman Stonecypher asked me to mention that Broadway Extension will be shut down from 36th Street to I-44 over the weekend, beginning on Saturday through Monday. They're going to be moving the large, those two large preassembled railroad bridges in place, and place those on the abutments over the weekend. You know, it's kind of like Christmas for a civil engineer. That's all I have.
All right, citizens to be heard. Michael Washington.
Yes, yes, everyone, thank you, thank you, thank you. A lustrous and esteemed group. I want to again echo what this gentleman just spoke about earlier regarding the various Martin Luther King parades and events. I, for one, participated, and even though I was trembling and shiveling, I couldn't let anybody see me, because if they saw my sweat, I'd have been in trouble. Anyhow. I want to talk about the Freedom Center here in Oklahoma City and not take too much of your time, because it is a very important issue. I'd like to get this in. Now, we are taking steps to preserve, my group, Empower People Incorporated, and I'm told that others are, to preserve the Freedom Center, because it is a very historical monument, and the only civil rights monument that African-Americans can lay claim to here in Oklahoma. And it's very important that it be preserved. I would like to read very briefly here. In 1958, Clara Lupa founded the iconic NAACP Freedom Center, Youth Freedom Center, which became the headquarters for the NAACP Youth Council. There, the youth council and community were taught the importance of Black history, American history altogether. They were taught about poverty, racism, segregation, and discrimination. They learned of the many contributions, values, and strides and sacrifices that African-American pioneers made during the civil rights era. On the front of the building, of the historic building, is a sign that reads Freedom Center, 20609 North Martin Luther King Avenue, home of the NAACP Youth Council, the Black Monument and Wall. And the following quote can also be found on the front of the building. "What mean ye by these stones?" And then there's a quote Joshua, Bible verse Joshua 4 and 6. 246 years of slavery, 1619 to 1865, 99 years of legalized segregation in 1965, 1964. Least we forget. The front of the building is also lined with plaques commemorating moments in the civil rights movement. The original Freedom Center was burned down in September of 1968, though. Awesome was suspected, but of course, no arrests were made at that point in time. Now, let me end by saying that I would like for a day to be declared Clara Lupa Day here, because she was very instrumental in reversing the racist discrimination and practices here in Oklahoma. And as again, since 1964, we know that we're not even, are actually barely 54 years beyond that point, so that's really not enough time for it to catch on, really. In closing, I believe that we need to have a stone structure in her image made and placed out in front of the Freedom Center. Let me quote right quick, and I'm getting out of your hair. In closing, I would like to quote by John Ruskin. "The builder's creed: When we build, let us think that we build forever. Let it not be for present delight, nor for present use alone. Let it be such work as our descendants will think us for. And let us think, as we lay stone on stone, that a time is to come, when those stones will be held sacred, because our hands have touched them. And men will say, as they look upon the labor and wrought substance of them, see, this our fathers did to us." And I will thank the committee for this opportunity to stand before it, and I have a great, great day, and Happy New Year to you all.
And we have executive session. We'll be back.